It is October sixth at seven oh two, and I'd like to call the word the Townsend Housing Authority meeting. And can I get a small coffee?
Natalie Call present.
Laura Shiffrin present.
Chad Sexton Iranian present.
And Courtney Bradley present. Um, this meeting is being recorded. Um, if we can do the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under one law, indivisible, limited to its own.
Thank you. So I did have this just as the work session, but I just wanted to see if there was anything, um, there was any additions or additions to the agenda before we get started. That anybody would like to discuss before we jump into the work session.
No, I think that's been off, but I don't, I think that's just a.
Think that's an extra one for you. Alright, so two, uh, work session, so we have started kind of looking at, um, under two point one point one multifamily bylaw examples. Um, which is the packet that you guys have in front of you, um, and we did look at this kind of in similar towns in nearby towns, and so what we're trying to do today is start to really look at these. And take a look at, um, some of our zoning and see if we can come up with some proposed, and start to work towards some proposed, um, zoning changes that we can recommend.
That would be awesome. It's kind of like the first step, or we're not gonna go anywhere.
Okay, um, so I think last time, or actually, we didn't really get to talk too much last time. Uh, so we started talking about the kind of first, the single family zoning and just what that looks like. In terms of what we have today, so in RA, for example, we have about three acres, two hundred feet of frontage. A fifty yard front, fifty feet front yard, fifteen foot side yard, fifteen foot rear yard. Um, with a twenty five percent, uh, lot coverage, and then we similarly in residential B is the same, all the same setbacks and frontage, but it's a two acre. Lot, um, I just pulled the spreadsheet that we sent you on the floor, so I have it here. Um, so that's what we have today, and those are the particularly the residential ones, we obviously have some other, we have the neighborhood commercial district, downtown commercial, outline, commercial, industrial. Which is a little bit different, um, but I was just thinking maybe if we could start today on the other one. Um, on the other two there, and just taking a look at, um, yeah, you guys do that, right? Looking at similar kind of towns to us. Um, it seemed to me like there was quite a few that are looking at, you know, versus the three acres, you know, down to two acres or two acres to an acre and a half, you know, maybe kind of starting to loosen some of those, just looking at similar instances to us. Where we have very limited to no source or, or service in an area.
Okay, so for instance, like Ashley. Theirs is just four of the, what used to be a builder's acre, forty thousand square.
Yeah, a single area.
They didn't change it any, um. I'm not, I know that our three acre is, I thought it was because it was in an aquifer.
So it is in an overlay, I believe, let me grab the map here, um, it is, I think, because it's on a, it's in an outline kind of area. That's an aquifer area, and I think we started down this path last, I feel like, uh, while ago, we were starting to talk a little bit about.
Yeah, I talked to Mike, he said, talk to, I, now he's leaving, I, we were supposed to, we were supposed to try to go through the office and talk further about that. But it would have been with conservation, that may not be applicable.
Okay.
Depending on when the bylaw was, may.
Um, so what it is, is in their like land space requirements table, there's a little footnote at the very bottom of that. That talks about residential in commercial districts, and what it says in there is three acres are required in aquifer overlay district. And so my question was, if we were to ever pose something that's lower than that, is that viable? Was there a reason that they said three acres? In that aquifer overlay district, and what was that, right? Cause I don't, I'd hate to go and pose something that's not viable in certain, obviously, overlay districts.
Right.
Can, if, can I just, um, interject with a lot of what I had been saying a lot lately? And maybe you can tell me how I can express this better. It seems to me, and I don't know how to interject this one, basically uh, ultimate decision that gets made, and that is the Board of Health. Okay, if the Board of Health is not going to grant you a septic design for a certain property. Why isn't that the end all? Why do we have to have? Um, well, I mean, if you want to do the minimum of the forty thousand square feet, which seems to seem to do well after the Timberly Park development was approved, and those were minimum, um, half acre, okay? So some of them in there are three quarters of an acre or an acre, but they all had to get a septic system, so I'm just, I'm just trying to grasp with why we have to fool around with so many different acreages. When people can own property that will only be approved by the Board of Health to develop.
I guess my, my thought around it was that if the Board of Health was looking at a very particular lot, and they said, yes, it meets requirement, sure, you can put a septic on it. But in reality, we've got a whole bunch of those lots all in a, let's say, this aquifer district.
If they wouldn't get a permit then.
So.
If they weren't viable.
But if they all were viable, and then all of a sudden we have a lot more density than we thought we, you know, we're gonna have. I guess I'm just wondering if there's like a, some kind of overarching study or something that told us there, that that had to be that size. I totally agree with you, I think the Board of Health, obviously, you know, they're, they're gonna be the ones that are gonna determine that, but are they looking at, if they look at an individual parcel. Versus a whole area that all of a sudden gets a lot more septic use. It's like, who's, who's gonna be looking at that? If I have a viable one acre lot, new viable one acre lot, but now there's too many in a, in an aquifer overlay, is somebody gonna tell us no? And that's what I'm, that's, I guess, what I was worried about, well.
Wouldn't that be conservation though? That's what I'm thinking, that if that perhaps is in that, um, district, I guess you would have to go to conservation.
But then would every single person that has a viable lot in that district have to go, you know, I guess that's why.
I think, I think that across the board, all the requirements should be the same. And go to, and go past the same boards, but a lot of this, many years ago, this was called snob zoning.
I, I don't disagree with you on the, like, the three acre regular RB, RA, I, I get that. I'm just trying to understand if they put that clause in, they put it in an industrial district or commercial district.
Yeah.
In an aquifer overlay for a reason, right? And I'm trying to understand, is it because of what you're talking about, is it because of that zoning? Or is it because there was an actual, there could actually be a problem with multiple septics in that area?
In the same.
In the same overlay area, that's what I'm trying to understand. I totally agree with you, I definitely wanna be able to do that, I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna do all this work and hand over proposal that actually can't be done because in an aquifer overlay district, one acre lots, all with septic would overwhelm the water system in that area, that's what I don't wanna do.
So you've got water, well, public wells, but water sources that basically are wells within Timberly Park. Is that not?
Private wells, you're saying?
No, no, Timberly Park is all public wells now, now it's part of the water department, our water department.
Right.
So.
I'm not saying we shouldn't forge ahead with like doing this, I think we should, I just wanna investigate the quite, the other, the other part of the environment. I just wanna find out where the, maybe try to talk to who or where it came from.
I'm thinking conservation would know a portion of that, but I also think that the, what, the, uh, water commissioners and commissioners might have an idea of, of that as well, because they in turn would have engineered the majority of where, where the water districts are, and
Okay.
So I would say that we could, we could ask, um, the water commissioners.
Okay.
Along with conservation, see, I believe in full transparency, we can, and anybody that has anything to do with the water, so that
Yeah.
Uh, you know, a- as we did with the, with the production plan, we need to touch any department that is, has remotely anything to do with it.
I, I think personally, if you have a piece of property that you should be able to explore every avenue possible that doesn't hurt the environment, that doesn't affect anybody else. But you have a right to develop that, as long as you meet, as long as you meet, you know, those criteria.
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
You know, you should be able to do that.
So do you, do you, Lori, do you believe that it's the, it's the order in which approvals are done? Is that what you're, which you're say, because you said, that you've been trying to communicate that, I mean, I've seen it happen on, when I was on the planning board. Is that it always goes down to what the Board of Health says, what can support whatever the building.
That, that we thought as a planning board, yes, but that's not what our bylaws say.
Correct.
Okay, I'm looking for a way that we can do what we agree. That people should be able to develop their land as long as they are within the parameters of not hurting the water system. You know, being okay getting unapproved septic design. This restriction.
Compliance with conservation.
Being, being in compliance with everything, but it's our zoning bylaws that are not allowing any variances on properties that aren't viable for more than what we're allowing. I'll, I'll speak specifically, okay, about the three family afford, we had, unlike Mr. Lorden. Yeah, we're out of there, um, or some other people, um. We do have a developer who was willing to do the affordable housing. And he's, it's just cost him too much money, and he has gotten no encouragement from anyone at town hall to pursue the affordable housing aspect of it. Because, and he was willing to do it, I explained about Jaffar, you know, whatever they would have to go through to do it. That, that wasn't the issue. The issue is that he was getting no cooperation from anybody that he spoke to because of our bylaw.
So when we were, if, if we all think back to when we were putting together the housing production plan, and I can't remember the gentleman's name, do you remember the gentleman's name?
Um, the guy that was helping, there were two of them, I think Andrew was the leader.
Yeah, Andrew, and he was saying that there's a lot of the bylaws that are making the, remember, we were looking at areas of, of possible development. And he said that with the bylaws, it's, it, there are a lot of areas that are excluded from any type of development like that.
Because of our bylaws.
Because of the by, he specifically said, it was because of the bylaws. Having said that, um, I've also been to several legislative meetings that are, the state is going to require towns with strict bylaws to, to ease those bylaws to be able to increase development within their communities. And I know that Townsend is one of them, because our bylaws are very restrictive on, for, for a lot of developing.
And zoning per, says that because of our bylaws, it's the law, and they can't give a variance. Well. The state, the state has their laws, and if people want to go to the state to get approval over and above the town. They, they'll say, well, the towns can be more restrictive than the state, just like the septic system thing and all that, okay? The town, so they can impose these stricter bylaws. Well, this imposing of those bylaws has made us not be able to develop any of the properties, I mean. I don't know which list it was that you gave us as far as how many permits were issued in the last, um. What did you, what did you, last five years?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, I don't think I have that in here, I don't remember.
I mean. It's, um, it's, it's minimal, you know, and I'm not, I'm not saying that we should do another Timberly Park, oh, we're gonna have like another, it's, that's not gonna happen, okay? But you'd have to have some growth.
I don't disagree with any of that, that's why we're looking at these, right, and trying to make a decision on it, so I agree with you, I agree, I think we should be doing that, I just.
The cluster house.
Yeah, yeah.
We're looking at all of those, because everything else, I mean, we, we, we had a really good backing, and it looked like we were doing well with the veterans housing, and then we shot down as well, you know, so we need to be more, you know, we're, we're again having another bite at the apple, you know, with, I think that, looking at the, the, um, the districts that, um, was put in the housing production plan, seeing what types of developments that we see would be able to go in there. And then look at the bylaws to see how we can, um, try to see if we can get some of those bylaws changes in those particular districts that are viable. I think the, you, your, your comment in regards to why is that clause there in there needs to be investigated, because that's important. There is a reason why they put it in there, so we need to find out why.
And it could, it could not, it could be just like we were talking about, they just wanted bigger ones, even if it was an industrial, then that could be what it is, but I just just wanna know the answer, I guess, before we, but I say, I say from here, we, if we go back to the RA and RB for now. Um, and what you guys think in terms of what we see in, you know, and what we think would work. We will obviously investigate the other comment, but I would say for now, let's kind of get down, I, I guess, this is what I was thinking. RA, which is the three acre, one here, just based on our kind of comparable towns that are similar to us. Possibly bringing that one down to two with a hundred and fifty foot frontage versus the two hundred foot frontage. So bringing that down a little bit, otherwise leaving everything the same. And then for B, I was thinking we might come down from the two acres to an acre and a half with a hundred and fifty foot frontage. Now, we could go down to the acre, cause that, you know, that's pretty similar in a lot of other towns, but there's also the acre and a half is pretty similar in other towns, so I don't know what, what you guys think about those two options.
Yeah, I, I think the two and the one.
Yeah.
Two and one, or two and one and a half?
Two and one. And the one fifty should be enough. And when, yeah, and when you do, um, I mean, I have a hundred, and when you do, um. You know, development plan, it comes before.
Yeah.
Um. It'll be however can be best laid out.
Yeah.
For top, you know, for, um, soil testing and stuff like that, so. But at least don't have it so restricted, that you can't really do anything.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Um, so I'm taking notes on those two here, just if we've made a decision, I guess, on what we think, um. So if you guys feel comfortable with that, I think the next kind of piece to it beyond, I know there's a lot of like rules and things in here, but um, thinking about the kind of multifamily version of this, right? Um, so our current bylaw, the way it reads, um, sorry, I just had it open, then I think I put looked at something else, is that it goes down to like eight acres, I think, is what it is.
Six.
Um, so it jumps really quickly, um, and I can pull that up right now, uh, so right now it is eight, so it's a minimum lot of eight acres with a minimum lot frontage of five hundred feet. Uh, front yard one hundred, um, minimum side yard sixty and rear yard sixty, I'll add that to our table when I redistribute it, just so you guys can see it there. On what it is today, um, and it's a thirty five percent lot coverage, um, and there's a density clause in there too on that one. So, um, which is not to exceed one apartment per three acres in RA. And one apartment per two acres in RB, so you can see even then one apartment per three acres in RA, I mean, you're that's already a six acre just for two units, you know, it's, it's really quickly jumping up.
Yeah.
Um, so it's basically telling you if you want a two family, well, here it's saying no matter what, you have to have eight acres, so even if you had two units, it's asking for eight acres. Which is.
Very.
Yeah.
It's almost prohibitive.
Right.
Correct, so what we, what you've saw in here and the table for what other towns did was, many of them did either um, they did like a doubling, not a tripling or quadrupling the way we had it, or they had a, like a fifty percent greater. So in this case, if we had a two acre, it would be asking for a three for a minimum multifamily lot, right? So a lot of them kind of did it that way, um, in here, or they had a, you know, particular ones, the way the other ones were in where it's like so many acres per unit, the only challenge with that is I think it's like telling you no matter what, it's, you know, you're setting a minimum lot size in that case per unit, which is also a little bit tough, whereas if you just say you have a minimum of three acres, and then you allow from there, the, if they can plant it within the frontage lot coverage and an approved septic. There's a possibility then they could maybe fit three on, let's say, the three acre lot or something, if it's that versus saying you have to have two acres per every unit, now you're forcing them into a larger lot, right?
So in this, this, this kind of dovetail into what, what Lori was saying, and this is where I have issues with this.
Yeah.
Um. It all is gonna boil down to the septic.
Absolutely.
And if a septic can support it, why doesn't our bylaws support it?
Right, and that's exactly what we're trying to do here, so I think with that statement, or are you saying that the multifamily should be allowed on, let's say the RA, we decided two acres, that it should be allowed on the two acres?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to make sure I understand.
If you can build a four bedroom colonial on an acre lot with an approved septic system.
Oh, I know, why can't you build two, two units? I know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Same thing.
It's the same thing, as far as invent, um, affecting the environment that we're talking about or supposedly concerned about. Um, the other thing about some increase there is that on a multifamily, you have to have your parking in the back. Whereas, like, let's just say, for instance, that existing structure had it in the front. Um. And if you end up with a, a mound or a hill in the back.
So I don't, so I can't do that, I don't see it specifically saying that here, but I'm also, it also obviously is saying that it needs to be, um, done by a special permit. So I have to look and see if there's like something else that's saying that here, um, but this one here doesn't say anything about um, the parking area, and, or ours are not saying anything in particular about the parking area in this, cause it's really a short kind of section here.
Right.
To it.
So, and I, and I'm okay with the fact that all of these other towns have it by special permit.
Yeah, well, I think we should, I think that's okay to keep, I don't think we should be, I think we should go through the right, you know, places to do that, I agree with that.
The lots don't have to be as big as what we're mandating.
I, I, I think a lot of this with the special permits is individualizing it to whatever the situation is, which gives
Yeah.
any board the flexibility.
Yeah.
I think more flexibility as opposed to saying, no, you can't have this, it's, it's more of, well, show me what show me what your plans are, and maybe we can work together to see what's gonna be supporting the best needs for the town.
Yeah.
Uh, the best needs for, for the situation, I believe that it, it, it should be that way. Uh, but to out and out say, no, you can't have it, is, that's kind of entering a lot of possibilities that we could have had even up to now.
Yeah.
For sure.
Okay, so what I have is, what we're talking about right now, just to kind of recap, is multifamily is lot sizes as shown in our proposed schedule here that we're making, um, along with frontage. Um, but it is a, uh, allowed by special permit, which would, um, kind of, uh, then we, it comes before the boards. Do you feel like in any case, a multifamily would have a different side yard or rear yard or front yard setback? In any case, or do you think that would be similar? Um, so for instance, we have fifteen foot side yard, so realistically, if we ended up with two lots next to each other and they maxed them out, we're at, you know, thirty feet of.
Thirty feet between the two.
Between the two, so I'm just wondering what you guys think about, do you think that we should have further setbacks for multifamily, or you think that, or do you think they should be the same as a single family?
That's a good question.
Um.
Right, I'm thinking just case, case, like you said, case by case basis.
It's gonna get a little tricky, right, so.
Well, yeah, you can get, I mean, there's all sorts of.
I mean, if, if I was.
If you put in a set of plans with gutters.
Right.
So you put the plans in without the gutters, and then after it gets approved and you build it, you put gutters on.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah. Um.
It goes like a density question, right, like if we, you know, how we feel about the visual density, you know, of things being that tight to each other.
Well, if it's a two family, you're talking four families, and the side yard would be considered a side yard for one family, I would assume. And that fifteen feet, in essence, really isn't a lot, well, to me, the country boy.
Yeah, it feels like not a lot for me too, but.
Yeah, but I think you'd have to, it would be thirty.
Well, it's thirty because they're combined, right, because this one is fifteen, this one is fifteen, but.
And if somebody put a fence in.
Put a fence in, fifteen, right.
Yeah, but then you have a backyard, and you have another side yard, and you have a front yard, there's still other space.
Yeah.
I mean, if it, I, I think what's gonna determine where the house is placed, I mean, if it was me, I'd be in the center of whatever lot it was, okay, but, um, I think what'll determine it is where the septic can go.
Right.
So. You know, that would be.
And see, that's, and we're going back to that, and that's why I'm saying that the, each one is determined by how, where, how and, and where the septic is gonna be before you can even do any planning.
Yep, yeah, but we just wanna set like what our minimum side yard is, right?
The minimum.
Well, the, you can, we technically, you know, you can have some come in to argue it, right, but like, those don't always work unless you have a real hardship.
Yeah.
You have to prove that hardship, right? Um, I guess for me, it just seems like it would wanna be a little bit more, I'm not saying restrictively more, not, I'm not saying like double it, but it might be, be worth twenty or twenty-five, just to get, just to get a little bit further away, if it is a, um, a larger building.
It could be a variance too, depending on where it sits on.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's when you go to the special permit and you request that, right?
Hmm.
I also like the, um. If I made it, so.
Yeah.
I agree, um, I like the aspect of a townhouse. Because that would mean that if a developer came in, you, usually with the multifamilies. It's gonna be an investor who's gonna rent it out, okay? But if it's another developer and they wanna do multi-housing, multifamily housing. They could do, um, a duplex condo, condex, or do three or four, depending on what their lot is and what the septic would be. So I think we should encourage that.
Are you thinking we encourage like a townhouse style, like through some of the way we, we write some of the bylaws, or do you think we encourage a townhouse through it has a less restrictive um, rules in place if it, if it looks a certain way?
Well. The, the townhouse, when, when I'm thinking townhouse, I'm thinking somebody's gonna set up condos and sell them.
Okay, so those are like individual, I guess I always think of townhouse as a multi-story, um, yes, piece like this. Where it's condo, I always think of like a individual, like an apartment, but it's like an apartment.
No, like, um, there's a whole set of them on Brookline, I think there's six or eight of them. And then West Meadow Estates is all townhouse condos, um, there's a lot of them in Pecroft.
Yeah.
You know, the, and that, the ones on, like Nova, they're condaxes, there are two that are attached.
Yeah.
Um. I mean. It's not usually dense, but it's, it's an ability to get some more housing and denser than a single family.
Hmm, I guess I'm trying to understand, is there a difference though between that and telling that, saying of, a two unit building that somebody can do, like is are we trying to restrict the style in a townhouse, or are we trying to let that be, if they whether it's four units and it looks like an apartment building, or if it's four units and it looks more like a townhouse, which is, looks more like connected houses.
Well, I see what you mean.
That's, that to me, when I think of townhouse, that's the way I.
Up and down.
Right, more, and it looks more like connected houses versus apartment building, right, which are two kind of.
Yeah.
One versus the other?
We, I think that apartment buildings are separate. I think they should be included.
How do we distinguish them, I guess that's where, how do I distinguish them as separate?
Is the.
It's the aesthetic and how, right, so do we wanna write a separate thing that, that talks about townhouses in there and. What kind of bylaws we're looking for around them versus around an apartment building, I guess that's where I'm trying, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Cause it's kind of.
You know, what district it's built in.
Yeah.
You know, cause if it's in a historic district, it has to be.
Yeah, they have to go through that board, right, and do that.
And, and give it, what is, you have appropriate, whatever it is.
Right, but are we looking for it like?
When I think of a townhouse, I think of a multi-level and it looks more like a house.
That's, that's, yeah.
As opposed to uh an apartment building.
Yeah.
Or a condo that is, you know what I mean?
Right, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, there are a couple in here that, I don't know if some, but some of the two family ones say it must. Not look significantly different than a single family, so I guess I'm wondering like, do we need, are we trying to suggest some language that? Um, pushes people towards things like that, or towards a townhouse, or towards a, you know what I mean, towards a certain um look, because it fits within the town.
I, I. I don't think you can. I don't think you can make somebody do that unless it's in a, in a historic district.
Yeah, it's really tough, cause it's really subjective, right, um, because when you go to like a special permit then, right? And now it's up to those board members to see if it fits the aesthetic that we've asked for, right? So it's like very subjective, it's a little tough, but I just wanna understand what we're trying to ask.
Well, if somebody is gonna build a multifamily like a box building, I'm, I'm sure that.
Oh, yeah, they're gonna, yeah, it's gonna get pushed back.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. We can let that one. I know, I know, I'm just trying to make sure we, um, you know, are we differentiating our multifamily, I guess is where I'm going, right? Are we differentiating what our two family versus three family, which is more than that, want to be, or want, or are we saying, are we writing it differently? I, I don't know either, I don't know either.
Cause those are the kinds of decisions I personally would rather leave up to the boards that make those decisions.
Yeah, and it's gonna be on a case by case, site by site basis.
Yeah. So you don't wanna be exclusionary, but then again, you don't wanna be too.
We don't wanna be.
Open for interpretation.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, right.
Let's come back to that.
Yeah, well, we just wanna open up opportunities. And I really don't, I really don't think we should be guiding. The look of it.
I think it's a really hard one to do, that's, that's kind of why I brought it up, I just think it's a, it's a very difficult one to.
Come in with their designs.
Yeah.
I think whatever board they're in front of is the, you know, we're gonna go off, go off for feedback. From the, from the other boards and take all that into consideration.
Yeah.
And I think as in, in the past mostly, um. There were concessions, you know, um.
I mean, if you really think of the process involved in it, you, they're looking at the septic. And it's a line drawing, and septic, and then the house footprint.
Yeah, where the parking is.
And the only, the only design of it really is between the owner and the, and the developer and the builder. And the architect, of course.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, unless we, unless we put something in that allows us to have control. Or some, or not so much control, but allows us to see more of that design, right, before it happens.
I don't think we need to.
If somebody's property, I think they should be able to do it, unless they are in a restrictive area like.
Absolutely, yeah, they have to go.
Well, let's look, let's take a, take a jump out of where we're at, in Williamsburg, if you've ever seen the Williamsburg development that they have down in um. Williamsburg. All these buildings that are period buildings, but they're townhouses and they're all different, but they're all together.
Yeah.
Those are the kinds of things that I think would be incredibly interesting.
Right, but what we're likely gonna get is not, is the developer that every single one looks the same and has the same color. Signing on it, it has the same, you, you know what I mean?
But that would be something that the person or the board that's doing the variance, or the board that's doing the special permit, I'm sorry, would, would.
But I don't know that they could, I, I guess what I'm wondering is, are they allowed to then weigh in on that if we haven't written something for them to be able to weigh in on it? Cause if we don't put it in, they can't technically, beyond their personal preference, right? Can't make any particular decision around it, right? If we don't have it, usually, we can't make a decision on it, right? Sort, sort of.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, you have some kind of entree to be able to discuss it.
To discuss it, even if it's not, you know, let's just say, in our, in our special permit for multifamilies, we want to see elevations. Of the exterior of the building. At least you'd be able, beyond the site plan, then you would be able to see what it's gonna look like and have a comment, and it doesn't mean it tells you whether.
What to do.
What to do, but at least then the public can also see what's going in and make their comments if they want to, and because there's a public hearing.
Um. I'm okay with that, the direction of Williamsburg. Is not Townsend.
Right.
And.
Well, I'm just saying, the opportunities.
Yeah, but we don't have, I don't think you're gonna have a developer, um. Doing that here, because it's cost prohibitive. So. You're ruining it right there.
Yeah, that's.
Well, what I'm seeing is, is that it, I'm not saying that we were gonna, we would find somebody to do that, I'm saying, what if somebody like that came in? And we said that this is the style that it is, it's gonna throw that opportunity, cause we don't know, there could be somebody that, you know, is. Gets millions of dollars and they graduate from WPI and come up here and say, I wanna go a little, we don't go.
Yeah, I don't think we should dictate style, but I do think we should have the opportunity to look at what it's gonna be and make comments on it.
Yep. And, and take, again, just the, the conservation, all the boards that we have here are the ones that have to weigh in before the final. Final decisions made.
Do you think we should have any type of clause in there, if it's over a certain number of units, to be asking? For some percentage of it to be affordable, beyond this, I know there's some rules statewide with that, but do we wanna do anything?
It's ten percent now, is the maximum. Yeah, I mean, we could put that in for any new development, any new development, we can put that in. If the state wants you to put it in. I like the.
I also believe that we should have, I mean, with that, we need to have a closer relationship with um DHCB. So that we can actively work on, if somebody's coming in with that, we can say, this is the person from the state that he needs to talk to in regards to it. As opposed to somebody from the town saying it's costly prohibitive.
Do you know if that, um, if the state requirement is uh based off of after a certain number of units? It's percent, cause Wes.
I think it's based on.
They changed it from twenty, are you talking about the affordable?
Yeah, so let's say, let's say somebody comes in with three and the bylaw says ten percent, and we say, well.
Oh.
You have to make one of them then, and they said, well, but that's not really ten percent, right? I'm just, I'm trying to just see where we might find a few. Um, things that, just, or for instance, if we say anything past six, we wanna have.
Can you find that out at the state, I think you have to find that out at the state.
I don't know, I can try, I can see, we can look it up, this other one, another one here is fifteen percent, but it's um. I don't see where they have like a, it starts at a number of, certain number of them, right?
That's a DHCB question.
Yeah, we used to have, it was twenty percent, and I just saw where it was reduced after a certain date to ten percent. I like the Brewster. I don't think they have varies.
Oh, sorry, I probably didn't put it in there because they were like all over the place, but I can look it up if you'd like.
No, uh, no.
Uh, did I put it in here though, I might have put it in the packet, Lori, cause you, I think if I thought it was, it made sense, I might have put it in here, but.
I just like the um. They just all seem to be a lot more, especially the ones that are our size.
So Brewster. I don't have all the varies, but if you, but if you look here, I do have some of them, which has like. Uh, the RL, the R. Yeah, RR and RM in here, and it says like, this one is, has area sixty thousand plus sixty thousand for residential dwelling. That's kind of the thing where you're talking about, is some of them say. Um, say it a certain way, like it's fifty percent more, it's double, sorry, it's at like, it's almost at the very back, I have it like for the. Or, yeah.
Yeah, these do have it.
Yeah, I just don't think I have the high, I don't think I included like the high density commercial or village businesses, that didn't relate to us. But I can pull it if you'd like me to.
Their residential is, is more restricted.
It is, yeah.
Across the board.
Yeah.
There's no.
But Brewster is.
Low density sixteen, which is just over an acre with the one.
Yeah.
Frontage.
Yeah.
You know, that is um.
And that's what kind of what we were looking at, yeah.
Now, they suggest um alternative frontages for cluster housing, there's a whole.
They do, yeah, so for different, for different types, and that's kind of where I was going, like, do we wanna try to break out different type? Where, I, obviously, we've talked about cluster or, you know, other things differently, um, cause it seems a lot of these things have like. Different types like that, do have a little bit different zoning.
So forty feet of frontage and a cluster, because it's most likely.
Yeah, they're usually smaller lots too, right, like they usually.
Their side yards are bigger.
So lot frontage is fifty.
This is, I like this, it says the special permit that we were talking about too. It says such special permits shall be granted upon, only upon planning board determination that the following requirements have been met. And that such alternative development better serves district intent and better serves the neighborhood of the land being developed. I like that too. And by law purposes, that we develop under otherwise applicable rules. So that gives much more flexibility to the planning board.
Yeah.
Which I think that's what, that's how it should be.
And then I believe that the requirements are these, these down here, this one, two, three, all these pieces, right? Which is what we started, started to talk about, yeah, yeah.
As usual, it's a little bit of this one and a little bit of that one, and it's all together.
Yeah.
Minimum, minimum lot sizes for, within a cluster residential development should be no less than five thousand square feet.
But I do feel like this is a little bit different than like a straight multifamily, this versus, versus, because this is a. These are individual, smaller houses.
Right.
On lots versus multifamily lots, so I do feel like the cluster is maybe a little bit different than the multifamily we're just talking about. Which I, I'm kind of okay with that approach to them being different.
Yeah.
Cause I think they just inherently are different, um, so it makes sense, like if we're developing one for multifamily way that we would.
More attractive for the, the developer to sell them.
Right.
Yeah, I like the Brewster one. That was another one.
So it does have. The Brewster one does have sixty percent of the parcel is set aside for open space, which is also interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, you said it's that one.
Forty percent.
Yeah.
But on a ten, ten, ten acre lot, which is their minimum, that I think for, for it is other than. So I'm just thinking like, it starts to get a little, you know, we may wanna look and see what some other towns have for. I think a lot of them have that percentage, but what are they, right, you know, um, see the other ones make a little bit different from sixty. I think I did, yeah. Think it was closer to the top? I should really probably do this in more alphabetical, but. I made it for my like spreadsheet when I did it, I don't know.
I should have numbered them when I pulled it back again. You wanna look at it?
Okay.
Oh.
Welling's instructor, structure shall be located a minimum of two hundred feet from adjacent properties and public place. That's a lot.
That is a lot. Is that their multifamily or?
Any multifamily dwelling consisting of only two dwelling units shall be located a minimum of forty feet from adjacent properties, so that's eighty feet in between. So that's really big too.
Yeah.
Principal buildings on a lot of single ownership shall be no less than a hundred feet apart from each other, provided. However, principally multifamily buildings consisting of only two dwelling units shall be no less than fifteen feet apart from each other.
So they're gonna allow two separate single families to be two hundred feet apart, but, or a hundred feet apart, but two, two family ones?
Multi-family ones.
To be fifteen, that is funky. I wondered why. You would think it'd be the other way around.
They also restrict bedrooms on a multifamily. Five percent of the dwelling units in the multifamily development shall have.
I kind of don't mind that one, like.
More than two beds.
Oh, more than, I was gonna say, I kind of like the small, I feel like promoting smaller ones is actually a little better, but.
Open spaces, at least sixty percent of the parcel shall be maintained as open space, and at least forty percent of the parcel should be contiguous open space. Excluding required yards and buffer areas.
Where are they gonna put the building?
Exactly, it's too specific, but um. As we're talking.
Lighting, the lighting by line there too.
I'm not surprised by that though, that's a pretty, that, that one gets neighbors pretty fired up usually, it's outdoor lighting, so. Actually, I'm not surprised to see that there.
So is used at smaller units and. We're working, you know, on like a restricted bylaw. It would be great if we could include. Um, special provisions for tiny houses.
I think that's what cluster really is promoting, usually, um, this one's a little, I don't think this one's quite cluster, this, this Sterling one. Um, I think the other one, we just looked at Brewster is closer to that, and there's, I think, one other one in here somewhere that I had told on it.
So that.
Which does promote smaller, the five thousand square foot lot, promote the smaller, usually it's, promotes a smaller house on it. Um, let me see what they say.
How's that gonna happen, five thousand square foot lot?
I am saying that number is right.
Bigger lot, because with a five thousand square foot lot, with tiny homes, would it be like one big system?
But I think that's what, what it's saying, it's saying you have to take a ten acre parcel minimum, right? It gets divided, forty percent of it gets divided up, you have to have a minimum of five thousand acres per those little tiny houses, is what it's saying. So it's taking like, it's only allowed because it's, because it's, it's only allowed because on a larger ten acre parcel.
Yeah.
It's not like any person could do a five, to do a five thousand.
Right.
For a lot, that's what, that's what this is saying.
So you'd have like a treatment for one, ten acres is a lot in the middle.
Yeah, somehow you'd probably have your, uh, shared septic. So I wonder if they would really be like condominiums, more like your, like they would get sold as condominium style.
Well, yeah. They would, and there'd be an H O A for the septic. And.
So that would be. Yeah, we just.
It'd be an association.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be in an association. But then you also have to have. I mean, how many? Units would they get?
Well, I mean, I think it would really depend on what the conditions of the lot are, right? But four, so if you get four acres left at the ten thousand, right?
Yep.
I'm missing take forty thousand, the forty thousand amount for now. I mean, that's a huge amount. I mean, theoretically, you could fit thirty two units, now you couldn't do that because you have to have roads and other things, right? But it would, it would roughly break down to thirty two in what's left of a ten acre parcel.
Right.
At a forty, at a forty percent scale.
That's an exciting possibility.
That, that is.
Yeah.
It's that.
For seniors who want to stay here.
Absolutely.
And you're looking at little ranches, you're not gonna, you're not doing with mansions.
I think you, I think we write it that way, like you're saying, like, like. On a five. Have, you can only have X amount of. Square foot or bedrooms or something like that, right?
Well, two bedroom one.
Yeah, yeah, but I think that's what we have to help determine.
Seven hundred square feet. Or five hundred square feet.
Seven hundreds.
Two bedroom.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and then we can put one and a half thousand. I think one of them.
Give plenty of open space too.
Or give. Or the plan would have. Need to be aging in place, and, and the doors would be wider, you know, get for, you know, did need a wheelchair, it would be like shower in there, kind of like.
You know, you know Courtney, the, um, is it?
Well, we look at.
Towers, no, what is that one that they were building, they're building those types of houses in the, in the, I want to say Arizona. I'd like to see how they're, how they're gonna do it. They do the wounded warrior project, I forget which one it is, is it? You, you know, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I do, there's so many different programs though.
I think, but they go in and they, they, they build a house for the veterans that come back wounded and some. Visible injuries and some have injuries that are quite visible.
Yeah.
But they, they have the aging in place, which they have the, the stones and, and sinks that lower, they have the cabinets that come out and that kind of stuff. Um, I'd like to see, I mean, I've seen the pictures that are in the advertising, but I'd like to see those designs. Because I think those types of things would fit into.
Yeah, and I think when we first looked at these clusters way back when I showed you guys that little presentation of it, where there was one in there that was for veterans. If I remember correctly, that was similar, I don't know if it was, all of them were as flexible, I think some, a majority of them were. Um, I believe those are mod- modular units that they came and brought in, yeah.
Which is even better.
Yeah.
They'll go up very quickly.
Yeah.
Um, but I think having that would be attractive for, for an older one floor, not two floor.
Yeah, absolutely.
I believe one of the, the one we looked at in Concord, their bylaw on that one was like, I think like. Can't remember if it was half or, some percentage had to have only one floor, one story. And the other half were two story, just to promote like, I think diversity in the housing, look of the housing unit.
It wasn't senior housing.
It wasn't, I'm not, and I'm just throwing an example, it also, you know, it could promote also like a, a single mother with a child.
Well, we talked about that.
That could. You know, you know.
And one, we did, we wanted mixed use.
Yeah, so that they would integrate.
So I think, I think from all the conversation that we had so far, it feels like we want to write a multifamily and a cluster.
Yep.
Right.
I agree.
Yeah.
From that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I concur, Madam Chair.
Sorry, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to squash all your chatter. Let's move. I'm trying to make every, make sure we're heading in a direction, what the. Um, was there anything else you guys read in these that really stood out to you as something that you liked in terms of the way they talked about it or the way they were? They had something written?
Well, some of them have new stuff for this downtown commercial, but we're kind of.
I know, I haven't gotten really.
You know, having, allowing or. Not allowing, but that the planning needs to be. You know, like you wouldn't build a skyscraper in the middle of someplace, you know what I mean? It's, it's gotta make sense.
Yeah.
We'll find the right word verbiage to, to.
Well, I mean, they have, I mean, in reality, we have height restrictions anyways on very appropriate. Which I think we would still want to make sure that we have something written on multifamily with that, you know what I mean? Um, so I don't know if we're thirty five, usually they're thirty or thirty five typically.
Well, what I'm saying is, is that I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want to make it restrictive. But I also want to make it so that if it goes beyond what the basic planning is, then they would need to get a special permit.
Yes.
And not allow the permitting board to be restrictive either.
Yes, yep. I mean, I, I think cause you're under special permit either way with a multifamily, right? But we could probably say we want maximum of four stories or something that would make sense for here, that's not. A skyscraper, right? But also not two stories that, in reality, we want a little bit more, we want to promote more density than that, right?
I think three's good.
I don't just, I, I think, I don't know if here would, you know, four would work. I don't see anywhere around here that would.
No, it doesn't, I mean, even when they did the apartment buildings, they're only three.
Yep.
And, you know, one is half.
On your own.
Uh, well, they both are actually, and they're very similar to what was built in Concord too.
Yeah, I think, I think three makes sense, I think we can put that in there, I think that, you know, helps kind of protect us a little, or have something that, you know. Some likes to stand on there and come and he's back with something. Bigger.
And again, everything depends on the soil that they have to work with.
Which starts with this empty.
And comes back to that.
Full circle.
It's just we, we have to get something going and, um, that we can forward to the planning board.
Um, what, how do you guys feel about parking? And do we want to put any provisions in here about parking, whether that's, not saying whether it's in front or the back. Or what I mean is, do we want to say that you have to have two, I think it's two for anyways for our zoning right now, or two for residential. I think the unit is the minimum, but I don't know if there's anything we want to write chicken here. Or if we, like, I think one of these had like something like the maximum lot is sixteen cars before you, sixteen spaces before you need to. Separate it with a island of trees, or, you know what I mean? We want anything, or want to think about anything around parking. I think another one had like, you have to have plantings that block headlights into.
Yeah.
Adjacent properties, which I actually think is not that.
I think common sense stipulations were.
Usually, usually, I just want to write them or else they won't make sense. Yeah, that's, that's true.
Unit or two cars per.
I think it is two cars per unit.
And then there must be a guest area.
Well, if you go to cluster housing, there'd be plenty of places.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, cluster is probably gonna have their own parking anyways.
But.
But in a multi, I'm talking like multi-family version of it, right? Do you need hand?
Yeah, with that. Well, that's not what they have on New Street.
I think. Three units. Because you get pushed into, uh, I think once you go above three, you have to start meeting, um.
Alright.
I think that's what it is typically anyway.
Is it the district or is it, oh, um?
I don't know.
Downtown district.
I don't really know because that's what we just did.
Yeah.
Or what was just.
Which was.
And, um, of course, it's different now than a rebuild. It's different now, if you're gonna develop, it's what the bylaw is. Bylaws changed, so you've got existing properties that don't have.
Yeah, they're not conforming.
And there's also the handicap. Space aspect of it.
I thought as soon as you go to four units though, you're into, um, ADA, and you're forced to put in a handicap unit anyways, right?
Um, I don't know, I know that, I figured out, I did Google it and looked up because of country estates. And, um. I know that over there, we only needed to have six. And we have like a hundred and eighty, not, excuse me.
I guess I mean with today's laws though too, right? Like, I'm pretty sure that.
Yeah, I'm talking about today.
Oh, I'm pretty sure with the code today, you get kicked above three units, you get kicked into the bigger. Lot, like the, into the main, like the I B C and into ADA, which kicks you into having to do.
Yeah, but it's only one, it's only one. Um, handicap space per so many.
Correct, yes.
So. It's, it's a lot. It's, I mean, I don't remember.
I can look it up.
If you can Google it. Handicap spaces per development, something like that.
Oh, I was just gonna look up the Mass ADA.
Yeah, that would. Put it right there.
Usually different with residents though. This one is one in every speed, eight accessible spaces, be very accessible, um. Fifteen to twenty five and a lot has have a minimum of one space, um, but this, I think a total public lot, I'm sure. It's more restrictive when you get into housing.
I think I was looking specifically at. They were apartments originally, but I think I was looking at. And, you know, what condos require. We have a hundred.
But if we were looking at the two family. I mean, we're not talking multi, the multifamily, we're not looking for four units, right? That's what.
But we could be under multifamily, right? That's, that's.
The possibility is there, but.
Yeah.
If it is, if that is the case, then. Anything bigger than that ADA would kick in.
Yeah, I think it's actually three, I think number four puts you in it.
Put you in the.
I'm pretty sure it does. Yeah, and there's definitely a possibility with, I guess, multiple, unless we say otherwise, we could end up with. Four or more.
Right.
Right.
Which means that we do have to be very careful about how that's worth it. Cause that would turn into smaller, for the builder, it would turn into, to more money.
To do more units?
Well, if we go into four to, to have ADA compliance, is it for all of the units or?
No, it's usually a percentage, I believe, um, the way it works, it's a percentage of them. Um, I don't know the number off the top of my head, um, I'd have to look it up. But I don't think it's a bad thing either to say. It's great, if you want your six, that's great, but you've got to be ADA, right?
Yeah.
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 Which is, I don't think that's at all, that's true.
Uh, the senior housing one.
That one would be different, we likely have to write something different.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, I'm talking if they did a regular multifamily without a specific senior.
So if there was four, we wouldn't have to make one, we would request that one be affordable housing and ADA compliant?
On a regular multifamily?
Yeah. If it was four.
We could, yeah. That's, that kind of goes back to that, that question that I had earlier with like the ten percent, and I was saying, well, does that kick in at a certain threshold? But we can, we could ask it to.
True.
We could say, like you're saying, once you're hit four. We want, or we say one, one unit per every four, and then if you go to eight, then they're, then they have to do two, right?
But then the enforcement would be the question in my mind, right?
Well.
Who would enforce it and how would they enforce it?
So then, those options could be in the bylaw. And then when it comes to public hearing is when we'll get all the feedback.
Yeah, like a special permit.
And then we can certainly, no, 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 no.
You're saying.
For the bylaw.
For the bylaw itself.
For the bylaw itself, and then as we've done in the past. You listen to the feedback and if you make changes, you know, to accommodate, that they come up with good ideas, you know?
Make changes right up to the time it goes to town.
So.
Um, in here, under, I think it's something like right in the beginning. This was Brian. Brian.
Yeah, the largest by now, that's good.
Yes, but they do have a need restricted section on here. Um, and what it says here is age restriction component will be granted under special permit, um, based on the following criteria. And one of them here is, um, is be with a service to identify housing needs of this population, which I think is.
Where are you, where are you at now?
So we are on the. Back of the fourth page. Um, it's actually under their multifamily section, they have an age restricted.
The age restricted.
Uh, it's actually on the, it's actually on the back page of it though, this, this particular one where it says the, um, special permit.
But it's under multifamily.
Yeah, kind of funny the way they have it written.
Oh, I see it up there.
Yeah, um. Service to identify housing needs of this population, which I think is a little subjective, but it's kind of nice that they're saying that the. Um, special permit under planning board, they have to identify. The housing needs of that population, which I think goes back to like the other things we started to talk about.
The maintenance of the integrity of the neighborhood.
Yeah, it's a funny one, right?
Doesn't beat the integrity of the neighborhood.
Maintain integrity of.
Um, I like the way that it kind of gives the planning board a.
That's, that's kind of what I was looking at, was some way for them to be able to.
Guidance.
Have some discussion around it, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And it's their, their suggestions are not like.
Well, some of what they say they have to do anyway.
Right.
You know, traffic study, congestion, um, that's a period view.
Right.
So do we have something that tells them that they have to do that anyways, in our bylaw? Is that under. Site plan review? Is, it, we specifically say that?
Well, it's part of the special permitting process.
Yeah, okay.
So when you get a special permit, it, it outlines all of the things that you're required to do. And if it meets this particular thing, they have a site plan review, you know? There's a whole, I forget what the determines.
But isn't site plan review different than a special permit? Are those two different things? Typically, or sometimes obviously a project has to go in both, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, that you.
Sometimes they have to go through both.
They have to go through both and sometimes they don't.
But sometimes, that's where I'm, I guess that's what I'm wondering is, are we in a spot? And would we be in a spot in one of these moments where they wouldn't have to have a site plan review? And would we be in a spot in one of these moments where they wouldn't have to have a site plan review? I don't think so, but I just wanna.
Unless they kick in things like stormwater management.
Yeah.
If they are looking at. The any density kind of questions, they might want to see that as well.
Do you think in any case we would write multifamily has to be approved by, with site plan review and special permit? To just make sure that it doesn't get. Site plan review doesn't get subverted somehow?
Well, if we did that and it really didn't need it, that's costly for the individual.
Agreed. But would there, if then would they, if somebody then would be, be basically be able to walk around the traffic study, right? But then again, if you have a two-family and you want to do it under multifamily, you don't really want to be doing a site plan review because. You're trying to put up a duplex for you and your mom, which they.
Well, wait a minute, no, you know, we could put that in there because in this, in the beginning part of what, what. The planning board does, they can ask for, what is it when they ask to waive certain provisions of it?
Yeah.
So they can request to waive the.
So the process, it's on there, and that's what I was just gonna say, they. They can be granted a waiver.
Okay.
And if the planning board feels that. No, you know, we're gonna have to look at this.
Then they'd have the option to do so.
Then the planning board has the action to do that and not waive it.
Okay. Would you guys feel comfortable then if we did a plan by site plan review and special permit? So we do catch it that way, like you said?
So that nobody can go around.
Go around it, the site plan review.
Although planning board can say it's not needed.
Correct.
They could, but at least they get the opportunity to say.
In the application process, they can ask about that as well. So. Now, let me ask a. A sort of a planning board, but also builder type question. Let's say that somebody wanted to do something, would they be able to present a what if I built this kind of thing?
We have, we have had that one before us.
So.
So we, I've done it.
Would that be an option to, before they even went for a permit?
So I've done that in other towns where we go and we meet, it's like a, it's like a work set, it gets put under a work session, not hearing. And we do like a preliminary discussion with a board and they tell us about like what they might want to see in it, or they say. You know, we're gonna want to see it for this, like site plan, they're gonna say, we're gonna want to see this one for site plan.
Right.
Right, um so we have done that, I have done that on projects before.
So what is that called, the preliminary? I'm just saying, yes, the, the, the.
Beth can tell you.
It would, it would give the person an opportunity to see whether or not they wanted to, if, if they were going to be deemed a site plan, that, that they would then be able to. I just don't want it to be cost prohibitive.
Yeah, so I don't think I've ever seen it written somewhere, uh the way I've done it is like we went and talked to um in these particular towns, like the. Uh you know, person from the town, in, in this case, it was a, like the planning staff member, we had went and talked to them, we said, okay, why don't we see if we can get you on the next agenda on the work session? So you can have a discussion with them. That's the way, it wasn't written anywhere, but it was kind of like.
Happens here.
Right.
So. I'm told that. The, if a developer comes in, that, and there's gonna be um an application made. That they can meet with Beth and land use coordinator. And kind of bounce everything on them, and then. From there, if it looks like they want to go forward and have a preliminary with the planning board, they can. And I don't think there was a cost to that. There is a cost. There's no, no cost if they're gonna come to the board and just have like a work session thing.
That's what, and then, but usually when you put the applications, when you pay the fee, or, right, that's why I've done it.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think they charged them, I don't know if you know, do you know Jody? I don't think they charged them for the discussions before.
Cause we had, I remember when I was on the planning board, we had a couple of those, what if we did this and what if we did that?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's like a, at least in one project that I've done on, it's been really helpful, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of what we do. And we really. Don't want, the intent is not. In my mind, anyway. Not to make it cost prohibitive. For a developer, even though sometimes it turns out that way. Time-consuming attorneys, engineers.
I, I know, but there's also, there's so many impacts, some of these things, so too, that you, you know, we also don't want to. Not have some of these things in place and then find out later that there is a major.
Yeah.
I agree.
Still is what it is.
Oh, yeah, no, I, yeah.
Sometimes it gets through the whole process and it's like, you know what? This really isn't gonna work, you know, unfortunately, it spends all the time and effort.
Yeah, so, I mean. Evident. From the non-production we've had. That it's not easy.
Well, we set a production plan. And we're, we're in the process of doing it, so we're gonna move forward, continue to move forward, I think that's what we're here for and that's what we're gonna do. And we're all volunteering our time and I think this was a great discussion, since it's what we need to be doing.
I will take a stab at putting something together that maybe you guys can review, and if you see anything else in here, if you take a look back at any point and say. I like this piece, if you could send that to me too, that would be, or let me know where, where it is, that would be helpful. And. Let's see, can anybody assist with um the question about this water, this water piece if I'm working on draft anything?
I'll talk offline and I'll give you.
Any other thoughts or comments?
I think I spend my.
Twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three target goals strategies.
So we kind of had, had that on here for a while, and then this was one of the pieces that came out of it, was kind of the thing, one of the things that we were gonna target. Um, and I think we got another particular target on for twenty-twenty-two, unless um you guys want to talk about any that came out of the HPP at all that you wanted to. I mean.
No, this is definitely.
I know, this is the big one that we've been.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And to include what we talked about tonight, not just the multifamily.
Yeah, this cluster as well as the um, the single families, yeah, the single family changes too.
So I think that would be major for us to. Um, get done and sent to planning board. And.
I would like to see. One of the major things that I think for the housing authority is um. We need to, we need to get some kind of feedback for the community, and I still think we need to do something. We tried a survey, but it didn't really kind of.
Do you mean feedback from me on some of this stuff that we're talking about?
On affordable housing, and we need to change, there's, there's. There's a stigma involved in this, um in regards to anytime you, you. Uh mention affordable housing, it's like turning a light on to a night crawl, they go right into the hole and nobody wants to talk about it, you know? It, it's something that we, you know, I've been involved in this for seven, eight years now. Every time that we've gotten some, you know, we need to work with the Affordable Housing Trust as well. There's properties that the Affordable Housing Trust has that was given over to, to them by um.
The town.
By the town, and there's still, there's nothing being done with those, those are opportunities that we're missing for, for that. There's, there's properties that they should be able to fix up and sound that we should be able to, to get affordable housing, there's a lot of these.
Or sell one. To do something with something else.
But that's, that's the, the Affordable Housing Trust, and I know that they need, um they just lost a, another member, uh and we need to get another member on there for that. Um, but that's, that's like a, a sister committee to us, so we, we need to be working more towards that. And my thought is, what can we do um as the housing authority to try to break through this persona, you know? The, the affordable housing does not mean projects, does not mean, you know, uh people on, on. On vouchers, it means housing for our aging population, which we do not have enough housing now. Um, I will say this, that the, the current senior housing that we have is over two years waiting list to get on there. The, even if we're looking at building some sort of transitional housing for somebody to be able to be in a apartment-style transition. Uh unit until something opens up at Townsend, Townsend Woods or, or, or like. Atwood Acres, that at least allows them some, some kind of security. It also would mean that if we had seniors, the seniors would then be able to, you know, uh they, they have property, they, their kids are all grown. And instead of them like having to leave, there should be some stipulation that they're be able to sell it to the Affordable Housing Trust. To be able to then get into our senior housing if they want to, but have other housing available to them for that. And their house then would be able to, to be sold through the, the housing trust. You, you, you know what I mean? So we gotta be, we, there's somehow we've, we've got to start marketing that this is something we have in town and we have to continue with it. That's the life of, of what's been going on, and this is gonna be fueling our bylaws, this is gonna be fueling our production plan that, that we've worked so hard on. And it means to step on the silver lights, I apologize.
Well, I agree, I, I think, do you think? That maybe this would work? In having the public forum again as the public hearing on, on the warrant. I mean, uh, when we get this bylaw. To have a public hearing to add to it. The needs of the community, the certain, you know, on, on the same. Agenda so that while we have those people with us, we can get that feedback.
Yeah, we, we need that because, I mean, there was a master plan written and accepted that the housing authority had no input on, which I find. I, I'm not really clear on how that had happened, so does that mean that we have to then take that housing portion of it and, and. Do what we want and submit it to the planning board or to have it, you know, rework that one section for the housing?
We, it did, we added the whole housing production plan to the master plan.
After it was written is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know, but that's. That's why the planning board finally did it because nothing was being done.
Right, so my, my point is that we, we, this is the kind of stuff that we need to, to, to kind of straighten out, the planning. We, 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 there's no planning, so we have been doing the planning, now it's execution, so what are we as the housing authority, we need to do for execution? And I do believe that there's a marketing portion that we're missing out. You know, I don't peo, I don't think people in town understand what the housing authority actually does. That the voice that we actually do have in, in the ability to take care of our aging residents. And we're trying to do that and people aren't listening to us, so what do we need to do to get them to listen to us? We have two properties that right now we completely can't have any input on. In regards to housing, um senior residents of Townsend, because they can pull people from anywhere they want. You know, it's, it's out of our hands at that particular point. So we need to work closely with the housing trust to be able to support housing for our seniors. And for people with disabilities, if we need to, um and opportunities for multifamily. We have the, we have the land to be able to do it. And we need to be able to, to kind of let the town know, this is what we need to do, this is how we need to move it forward. And that's gonna help us with state requirements in regards to affordable housing.
Um, we'll just make sure that. The housing trust knows that we met tonight and direct her to the. Discussion this evening. And. You know, in, invite her in the future whenever we, or, you know, if they want to have a joint meeting.
Yeah, I know we were a little more work session focused tonight, particularly, but I think, yes, and get the other agenda topics that were on our list last time back on. So we can have a, for the next one, so that we can have a bigger discussion around some of the other pieces.
Cause I think we should be marketing towards developers, should be calling developers and. As a, as a housing authority and saying, you built this over here and you built this over here, what do you think we do for our community? We need to be more proactive in that respect, we can't wait for, you know, it's, it's way past, we can build it, they will come, cause they, they won't. We've got to start buying, we've got to start thinking something about it.
Now, years ago. When Kathy was around, Kathy was land use coordinator. At that time, the housing authority, we met with two different developers. And. Just couldn't get passed. Nothing was ever done. With. Any of the three of them with land that they talked about originally when they came in to speak with us. Those parcels were actually never built on, period, let alone for. For this.
We have feasibility studies, we have all the background.
Yeah.
We just need to get it passed. We, we, we've got all of that information ready at our fingertips. So we need to get, I think. Let's say it again, we need to market, we gotta get them in here. You know, if it, if it, if we get a developer that is interested in it, they can help it, help us out with marketing and then. When we do our public forums, they're the ones that are gonna be doing all the talking, if it's gonna fit within the parameters of what we feel is gonna be, the town's going to accept. They're gonna do all the work. We're just providing them this, this stage to be able to do it.
Now. In the past, the ones that did come before us, um. Or this body. Um, were local. They were all local.
Developers, were they smaller?
One was big.
One was big.
And the other two were small, individual, just built houses here or there, that kind of thing. And he's still here, you know. I just, I think they get to a point where. You know, it's too much, it's cost prohibitive.
Which part of it was kind of too much before for them? Just pushback from. Or was it that particular parcel was too passive?
No, actually, I think. I think. Well, one of them was what ended up being Harbor Trace. And. You know, you just can't compete with four or five hundred thousand dollar homes. You know, and that was for a very long time. In the making before, well, the permits were issued, they had to be, there was a deal made with the town for the water and on and other stuff. So. Yeah.
Yeah, that was.
That was, that was one of them. Uh, another one.
Look at the rail trail, okay, tonight, we're not even talking building. The rail trail.
I know.
Nineteen years.
I just, I was just asking what the. You know, I don't know enough about. When they came in here and sat down and what, what turned them away, I guess was my question, really, what turned them away?
It's. There's a lot of things, it's very difficult to get any type of thing approved and changed in the process. You know, it gets.
And they look at their bottom line.
No, I.
You know, they look at their bottom line and. And we can't help with that, we can always say like, please do this, cause the town needs it, and they can only just go so far.
And it, was it because they were saying it was too expensive to go through the process of getting approvals for these things?
Yeah, a lot of it.
Or was it too expensive to physically build them?
I don't think it had anything to do with building them, I think.
At that time.
Yeah.
Yeah, now, today's different, yeah, today's totally different, but.
But, but in the past, it's been getting the approvals.
Too costly for them to get the approvals.
I don't think it was cost, I think it was the time, and it was the process involved in that.
Because there was no avenue for them to like, 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 because there were no laws like this for them to.
I'll give you a for instance, when, when.
Sorry, I know, I don't mean to be prying, I'm just.
These are very good questions and these are, these is how we all grow. Um, the. The whole idea behind affordable housing was that. Um, it was a. The permitting was done as a, I forget what the, what is the permitting called? When they are all, you have, the permitting is one process instead of going through.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, I know what you're talking about.
Comprehensive permitting. So. Without that, the process can be two, three years. Going through, making sure you get approvals, that you follow this, now I gotta go to conservation, now I gotta go here.
Is it specifically the affordable piece to it that makes it that long?
No.
Cause I.
No. No. But having that I, I am, I'm not a lifelong planning board member, but in the time that I've been on it. For one reason or another. There's always continuations.
Okay, cause that's what, right? I guess.
There's one project, there's one project that's been on there the whole time I was on planning board and it's still on and.
Why does it get continued? Because, because the, because they didn't like something in particular on it or because that person didn't have the right information meant or?
Or they had an approval and and. Or they didn't have an approval and they wait till the board changes and then they come back.
How interesting. I guess.
Or they needed, they needed something done and they didn't have it done in time. This happens a lot. For that meeting, so they asked for continuation.
Yeah, and that does happen and I know that, but that seems to be then they might not have had there.
Most people don't.
Ducks in a row.
Right.
Which I I guess what, I guess where I'm going is like, I don't, I just don't know how that, I mean, I. Yeah, and you know, obviously it should go faster than two to three years. It should never take that long to get a project through.
Well, let's look, let's, let's look back, Courtney, when we were doing, we did our veterans thing. Okay, we just look at that.
Yeah.
We had um. Invested a lot of time and effort looking for other agencies to come in. Several different agencies came in, planned with us. I mean, how long did that take? Two years? Before we even got to a point where we're going to talk to the public about it? We talked to the public about it. We had one agency that we really liked, wanted to to move forward. They then had to do a pitch to us. We like them, we did more work between the two bodies, then we had a public hearing. In the public hearing, the public hearing was, we didn't get any negative comments about it at all, that people were all on, you know, it seemed like everybody was on board. Then we we put it in front of the town and the minute the the town meeting is is when we started getting. Well, what about this and what about that? And I'm thinking, well, what about, why didn't you show up to the public?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
You know? So the gentleman that we are working with was like kind of aghast in the town meeting, like wow.
Oh, yeah.
What's happening, yeah.
Yeah.
I know. Why did you pick this? Why weren't you looking at others? We we had the opportunity.
To have the discussion and you guys know.
So.
Yeah.
They they actually kind of threw their hands up and said, I'm I'm all set.
Yeah, no, I I agree that. I guess. If, let's say, aside from the affordable piece, let's just say somebody came in with units that met our current bylaw, right? It was developer that came in, met the current bylaw. How long do you think it would actually take them to get through?
I'd say a year and a half.
Really?
I'd say a year and a half.
That is very long.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's not a hundred and twenty days.
Well, that's, I guess, I guess, I guess, I'm surprised about, right, like.
Yeah, it's it's not a hundred and twenty days. Although I saw that number, that that's kind of what. The governor wants us to be.
It should be, it shouldn't be dragged out like that. But you also have to look at our town, a lot of boards don't need.
No, I know, and I know that, um, yeah. It's tricky, but I I guess I'm just surprised when usually you have some amount of time that like we're required to respond, right, in reality. Um. But that's not. Yeah.
And then you get. One board should have been seen before another board, so.
That does happen, yes, I I.
Okay, so then that changes the process.
Right.
Right, you know, it's.
Everybody always wants to be the last word to go.
Yep. Um.
And all the boards are volunteers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And there may be things that somebody's asking that they don't have, so it it gets continued.
Yeah.
Something is asked for that they didn't plan for, so they have to go back to the engineer.
Yeah, I know, and I've been through that process, so now, and we were told that they didn't need it, and then they decided they did need it, and then we weren't ready, cause then, been there. Um. Okay, sorry.
You know, that's the kind of stuff that, you know. It it's the, in affordable housing came in with with a comprehensive permitting, so you have one, one hit.
Yeah.
You know, you just go get that one permit and it covers all bases, as long as you hit this criteria, then I, you know, you're able to do that. Plus it has the density bonus and all of that kind of stuff. But I I just think that people have this vision of affordable housing being. You know, projects, and that's, that's not what it is.
Right. Like, um, Atwood Acres. Was, it's an affordable building. Versus Townsend Woods, which is senior housing. So. In. Atwood Acres. You could be twenty years old and disabled and live there, wouldn't matter.
Yeah.
That's all income based. And then the the Townsend Woods is also income based, age related and. Income based.
So we we've made provisions for age restricted housing. There's no marketing for it. We wrote the bylaw, there's no marketing for it, you know. With a a land use coordinator, is it part of a land use coordinators um in their purview to to market? I don't know, you know, to market developers to, you know, we're looking at, there are certain. Um, properties that are or certain areas that we have looked at to designate a a more higher density type thing and nothing happens to them. We can identify them, we tell the state we identify them, but no work is done.
Right.
You know, we need to 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 increase the tax base in the town as well. That's the only way to do it, it's not.
Right. Yeah, because economic growth isn't happening here either.
Yeah.
So. Um. Town administrator. Should put that and. As one of the goals for the town. And. Authorize the marketing or do the marketing.
Well.
Representing the town.
I have, I have as. My my other role in town, one of my goals is to be able to bring. Um. Bring that. As one of my selectmen's goals. Is to make sure that we are, we are looking to market correct amount of development and for housing development.
Something that should.
Yeah. That's one of my goals. Um. So it might be my move from my twenty-twenty-two to my twenty-three goals, goal list, but I think that's really important. Cause I think that. You know, it, you know, it has to come from the top, that.
Yeah, it does.
It has to come to, we order a selectman saying to the town administrator, we need to go out and start marketing these types of things and and therefore. Um, the town administrator can work with the housing authority, can work with the Affordable Housing Trust, you know, there's a lot of different. Planning board, land use, all of that. At your fingertips. It all boils down to marketing. I'd have to put in an ad for a national, national thing. You're a developer looking for opportunities, you know, come see us.
It's almost like you need like an RFP list for just somebody coming to talk to you, so just to get it like, so that it's somewhere other pe- that people are seeing it.
To generate interest, absolutely.
Yeah.
And these are options, cause I'm sure that there's several options that are much more palatable to our residents that we haven't even thought of. You know. I'm sure there are.
Um, I'm gonna just be at the next meeting. Yeah.
When do you think you?
Are we doing November?
Well. When you think about you can, I don't know. Challenge. I would love to have these like. Uh, let me, let me work it from backwards for a second. Um, I think it'd be really great for us to feel comfortable about what we have drafted enough in December to be able to feel like we can send this.
Do you know that when the um special? Town meeting is? I do. I'm asking you, you know.
I don't, I don't.
I think we said December fifteenth.
Oh, I thought it was the thirteenth.
It would be the thirteenth, one of one of those, but it's in there somewhere.
Could we? And can you do, keep the twenty-seven?
Oh, tomorrow.
This month.
This month.
So that's gonna be three weeks.
Is that Thursday?
It's a Thursday.
I can do that.
I can do that. But can our chair do that? Three weeks.
Only reason why I'm hesitating is because my husband's leaving the next day for a week long trip and I'm probably gonna have to help him back that night.
Okay.
Oh, hey. I know. But in reality, I'm gonna do the work on the weekends, so in real, you know, any other day except for, I think the twenty-sixth, I have a, um. I have a regulatory for another town.
Yeah, I can't do. You want us, is selectmen meeting on the twentieth? October?
We just had one on the board, so the next one's the eighteen. So no, we're not having any.
I could do the twenty-fifth.
I can do the twenty-fifth.
I can do the twenty-fifth. Does that work, give for you?
Yep.
Seven.
Seven, October, I bet.
Yeah. Is that for you, Jody?
Yeah, do you?
And it's a Tuesday, that one.
It is, yeah, sorry, I'm messing this up.
Do. Or the same thing.
I think it's kind of nice in person if you guys are still on board for that.
I'm still, yeah.
But.
I I I think we, I I'm just gonna make a suggestion to the chair.
Yes.
Um, I would put that, um, yes, to have it, but not make it a, um. Uh, what is the term?
Suggest.
Yeah, but you're gonna suggest, you you're, no, you're putting convenient, you're putting Zoom on for convenience.
Correct.
But the.
But the, I would like us, the board to be in person.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, cause I'd like to be able to have the town if they wanted to.
Yeah.
You know, if somebody wanted to make the comment and you so chose.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, cause that would be, this is a work session, but that'll be a regular meeting.
Correct, yep, okay.
So make a motion when you adjourn.
One second. Yes, worship and yes.
That's actually the dream.
And, really, yes. Thank you.